Oh, good idea.
We'd like to drop the drop stage. I like the sound of that. That'd be all right. We could just... When you hit the gavel, the door actually drops. Oh, wow.
That's when the mayor's really important.
Yeah. Here, all I can do is call for bathroom breaks and the start of the meeting. It is 4:00. We'll call our December 8 meeting to order with a roll call, please.
Mayor, Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here. At this moment, all who are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards and proclamations today, but we will open the citizens forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who has anything they'd like to bring before the city. It's an opportunity for them to speak. We just simply ask that you give us your name and address, of course, please.
Norman Mantle, West Pleasant Hill Road. In the past, I think I was going to Phoenix, you passed a resolution to deny the destruction of the old hospital 4 to 1. The next time it comes up the issue, you ought to ask the man to sign on the check that pays the taxes, what he thinks about it. You guys make a decision, and it has nothing to do with your pocketbook. So I don't think you made the right decision. The man's paying the taxes. One that signs the check should have the last say.
Okay. Thank you. Couple of thoughts. I mean, I know we don't always respond, but just a couple of thoughts I think I might point out on that. And we do have an ordinance in place that looks at buildings that are on historic nature, and it is an ordinance. It's simply not a decision. It's a process that legally has to be found when a piece of property is put onto that list, so to speak. There has to be a legal justification for it. While I did vote in the affirmative to knock the building down, there still is legal thing. The only thing I might ask, I don't know if we have anybody here, I don't know that they actually pay taxes on that building, do they? I don't think the city, it's a not-for-profit building. I don't know that there's... Does anyone know if taxes are even collected on that?
I can't speak with absolute certainty, but I would expect that it would be one of the exempt properties.
Yeah, I would think so. So, because I had read, just for public consumption, that people say, oh, they're keeping it up for tax reasons, but I don't think we receive any... It's not just us. I mean, we only get a small percentage of property tax, but anyway, so there is a process that has to go through. It's if it were just somebody's regular property and they said, I want to knock it down, and it wasn't a historic building, that is the correct, and we don't hold them to it. But that particular property does have some legality attached to it, and there has to be a process in which things are met to knock it down. But appreciate your opinion coming in. Anyone else? Okay. That'll move us on to the... We have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so they'll move us on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 1, 2014. 6.2, Resolution Number 14-7160, describing the corporate limits of the City of Salina. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 14-7161, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for life insurance services with Reliant Standard.
Is there any item on the consent agenda Commissioner would like to remove or amend? If not, it entertain a motion to receive them.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and that'll move us on to administration.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 14-7158 and Resolution Number 14-7159, establishing the urban functional classification system and the urban boundary lines for the City of Salina.
Mr. Stack?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a updated blue sheet from last week. I was asked to look into the kind of the... What is the reason for having to... For KDOT wanting to update these functional classifications of our streets? What I was able to find out is this does not change any kind of funding eligibility for these streets. Basically, I tried to put that in here. Where did I put... Any street that's above a collector, so they have major and minor collectors now, and then the only local street that actually came out of the collector system was that the one street that is Marymount is now basically a local street now. So it's... That was the only one that would not be eligible, but the rest of them would all be eligible still for federal funds. The... What passed basically put all these new roads, or all these roads that were existing, into a different category at the federal level. And so what I learned basically is we'd have to go through federal regulations on any design or any work on those roads. And so KDOT has basically worked around the state to try to say, we're going to keep these the same as they were before, but we have to make them a certain level. So they're now going to be major collectors instead of minor arterial. It's kind of more of just a way to keep the status quo for the state. We would still go through the state for federal fund exchange dollars. That's the majority of the money that comes back to the cities for any work that we would do on these roads, anyway. And I kind of put in a... I put in a kind of a couple of page summary sheet that KDOT gave me as far as what those design standards are for federal guidelines and federal regulations if we were to keep those in the federal system. There's quite a bit of red tape you'd have to follow. Performance monitoring, the bridge inventory rating is the main thing. A lot of cities would have to go through element-level bridge inspection, which is way beyond what our bridges need, basically, and it just costs a lot more money. So, hope that helps a little bit from last week. I'll try to entertain questions again.
Great. Any questions for staff on this?
I just have a quick question from the list of all the different things that we're required to report on and everything, because a lot... A number of the things in there said, well, it looks like it was written like maybe last... End of last year, in the spring or something that said...
Correct.
They'll determine some of these things in 2014. I take it that all these things have already been determined and that even if they hadn't, we would be exempt from that by accepting this area from all of those reporting?
Yeah.
All that criteria reporting?
Basically, right. They put... Kent kind of helped me explain this a little bit in the blue sheet, but it was basically these streets would now be into the... Almost like a federal highway regulation, whereas KDOT has a lot of federal highways and roads in the state that are federal dollars, and they need to use those federal dollars, but they didn't... They felt like the city streets would not need to be at that level, and then us having to run through all the hoops and basically the bureaucracy for those, for our streets, which we've never had to do before. So they basically just took those streets out of that similar system. We don't... Ohio Street isn't, you know, interstate highway, so they took those out. And for some reason, the legislation at the federal level to put those in, so KDOT said we can take those out, basically.
Okay. And is that... Would that most likely characterization of that be that KDOT's kind of... Our agreement with KDOT kind of insulates us from that and from the changes in the national requirements. What... How... Have we always been on this... In this arrangement with KDOT? And what happens if, for whatever reason, the state does away with this sort of program type thing? Is there a chance that we might be all... All our municipalities be left on our own to deal with these things? Because right now, we're paying them, what, 10%? And so...
Right.
I mean, what happens if the state says, gee, it's really not worth it? Or if they said, we're... Looks like we're going to need 20% now? I mean, what... It's a history of it. Like, what's the likelihood of either one of those scenarios occurring?
Basically, if we don't exchange the federal funds, the way it used to work before we started doing that was we would get a project in Salina every four years or something. The KDOT would give so much money to each county, or actually, it's each area. So that money comes back to each area, whether we decide to exchange it or not, but it was... It would be more of in a project-related. So, like, South Ohio was recently done, I'd say in 2008, maybe. It was our... One of our last projects where KDOT administered the project, took the money that they get from the feds and used it on that road. And so the federal fund exchange allows us to more... To budget for it more, or we just do so much each year instead of basically trying to save it up at the KDOT level. And you don't really know how they do that, because they... This project costs a lot or a little. You know, Abbling gets a project, Concordia gets a project, and they have to spread that money around. So we wouldn't have to exchange the money. It would just be a different... It's a different program. That's the way it kind of used to work before they gave you the option to exchange the money. We, as a staff, felt like exchanging the money saved us in the long run because of the amount of administration and oversight and inspection that you have to do when they actually administer the project. So that doesn't really change. This allows the status quo to remain. KDOT would still be able to do any of these streets that we've... That we're putting in the system, just like before. They wouldn't... At least they wouldn't have to do them to the federal regulation level, which is... They wouldn't... They don't want to do that anymore than we do, in this case. They want the city streets to be at their own jurisdiction, basically, without having to go through the federal hoops.
And whether or not we do it, or the state kind of does it on our behalf, is there any impact on the final product as far as... I mean, when you talk about reporting and inspection and all that stuff, I mean, are we guaranteed the same quality product by passing that service on to the state?
You just have to go through more. The state has more rigid requirements. It's a little less flexible. I guess that's the difference, is if you really want to have a... You know, a lot of cities actually use KDOT as access control. That's an easy way to take that off the city's lap, put access control on KDOT, and then they have to deal with that. K-7 and Kansas City is a good example, where the cities just decide to let them handle that. So there is a way that insulates the city somewhat from... If it's a big project that you want KDOT just to handle, that's... That could be a way to, I guess, to maybe answer your question a little bit, that's maybe an advantage to using them. Otherwise, it's easier for our inspectors, you have to have KDOT-certified inspectors, and you have to go through the... All the different processes and reviews. Takes a lot longer. Right-of-way acquisition is at a different level when you go through KDOT. So it just adds an element of a lot more, I guess, time and, we'd say, expense to the project. Granted, maybe you get a better project out of it, or it's... You don't... A lot of cities don't have the staff to administer the project on their own. That's why they use KDOT for, like, an Ohio project or a route through town, say, in Ellsworth. Ellsworth or some smaller towns, they just have KDOT administer the project. So that is an option, but we've felt like we like to have the control and a little bit... You can do a lot more projects faster with just accepting the money and giving them the 10%, basically. Okay.
Yeah, I would say it is a good deal more flexible in terms of what we can plan for, because we know we're going to get these funds annually. And so, for example, in our capital improvements program, we can count on them coming in. We don't have to guess and think, well, for this project, we might get state funding, or we might not this year. So it does provide a certain degree of certainty that we have not had before they did the sharing.
Just had a related question. Looking at the... Some of the differences between the federal highway system and KDOT, they seem to be geared towards performance monitoring, bridge inspection, design standards. Is there significant difference between the federal and the state standards, or do you know? Just, you know, ask the question differently. Are we giving up any significant amount of safety or design standards?
It's a good question. Seems like the... It's just a lot more work to get what we feel like is the same product. Our design standards are similar. Astro... Just, for example, the design standards that we use for our roads are basically the same, but you don't have to go through the federal review of those and any of the mandates, basically. Sometimes the mandate's something that takes a while to, I guess, to work into a project. Maybe you don't do it on this project, do it on the next one. So there's just a lot of federal contracting oversight procedures. You have to go through the federal...
Guess it was the...
A lot of the different federal requirements would apply. I can't remember, like, Buy American and Davis Bacon Wage decisions, and there's just a lot of things that you... There's a lot more paperwork, basically, for the same type of project.
But you're generally referring just to quality of the street?
Street... Well, in particular, I remember not too long ago, the status of the bridges in our neighbor to the east. That state wasn't too high, and I was just wondering whether they were doing their own inspecting or using federal listings.
I can speak to bridge inspections. KDOT is very proactive on that, and if they felt like we needed element-level bridge inspections, they would make sure that happened. But those are done on certain bridges and certain types of bridges, and KDOT's very involved with that and with all the cities on that. So that's something I can say is they do a really good job of oversight for all... A lot of the cities and the bridges in our state. I don't know much about performance, that's like data collection. I don't know what kind of national performance measure data. It'd just be... We'd have to learn what the rules are and then comply with them, so it's just something we've never had to do before.
Yeah, a lot more bureaucracy, probably.
It just is. Now, you know, some of these things are set up for good reason, so you would think that they have a good interest at heart, but the... Our city has chosen to... We have started a pavement management program, so next year, we're looking to drive our streets again and get another data point for how good or poor our streets are. So we... Some cities would choose not to maybe... They would be fine with federal oversight, maybe. I don't know exactly, but our city has... We feel like we've got... And KDOT believes that our city is one that we don't need this level of oversight, basically. Wichita and Kansas City, they talked to me about those as well. They each left in like one main street, so... And Kansas City left in Metcalf, if you know where Metcalf is. That was one street that they said, we want that to be at a federal level, basically. Wichita, I think, left in... Can't really... I don't know if it was Kellogg or not, but it was one of their streets. So it's just... That's the difference, I guess. Each of those cities took all of their streets out of this program except for one. So, if that gives you any reference.
Going back to Marymount, just for a second. Does that mean that Marymount would no longer qualify for federal funds if it needs to be repaired?
It's the Marymount south of Cedar Ridge that runs into the Elks Country Club. The Elks, not the Elks. It's not the Elks anymore. Great Life. Great Life and then the River Runners. That's now considered a local road, and that is correct. No, that would not... They would not call... That road, that short section of road there with the roundabout, would not qualify for federal funds anymore. Cedar Ridge now and Cloud is the road that now qualifies for the federal funds, because it's the new collector that's been built. Basically, Cloud was also... And Cloud used to run over there. I don't remember. I'm not sure exactly what happened to Cloud in there, but it's just gone.
Well, Marymount... Marymount has continued on to Cedar Ridge now, so that's the one road.
That's the new collector, right. That's the new route.
Yeah, so it stopped the other one, and it's now just used basically for that neighborhood, a couple of neighborhoods in there.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this hot button issue? Oh, wait.
I'm not the public, but I was going to add one more illustration. I attended some of the meetings with Dan and representatives of KDOT, and the one that got my attention was they basically indicated that streets like Ohio Street, if we maintain that as a principal arterial, then we would need to be applying the Federal Highway Administration regulations to outdoor advertising, which means that people wanting to put up signs along Ohio Street for their businesses would suddenly be having KDOT and Federal Highway Administration review, which is not a good thing. So, that got my attention, and I don't think we want to have any involvement with the Federal Highway Administration on local city streets as far as signs or outdoor advertising. So, that, when they indicated that keeping it on the federal system would make it subject to the outdoor advertising regulations, I think that's another good reason to take those principal arterials off.
Okay, thank you for that information. Okay. Bring it back to the Commission then for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 14-7158 and Resolution Number 14-7159, establishing the urban functional classification system and the urban boundary lines for the City of Salina.
Second. Motion to second to adopt Resolution 14-7158 and 14-7159. Any further discussion? See none? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 14-7163, authorizing the city manager to renew the agreement with Delta Dental of Kansas for dental care benefits.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The City of Salina has contracted with Delta Dental of Kansas for primary dental care benefits since 96, 97, when the city shifted to a self-funded structure. And in researching, found that we've actually contracted longer than that. It was just in a fully insured situation well before the 96, 97 timeline. Benefits of Delta Dental, they have a large number of dental providers in their network, which relates to larger provider discounts for our plan. Delta, upon renewal, gave us two options. One is a single-year agreement with a slight increase, or a three-year plan that gives us a flat or no increase for one year, and then the two subsequent years would be a slight increase of under 3%, 10 cents per contract, per month, per employee, per month, for both 2016 and 2017. We currently do not have, nor have we in the last several years, have any concern on their service or the benefits that they're providing our employees. Our current census includes 515 contracts. At that level, we estimate expenses for 2015 to be $22,557. Again, that's a flat renewal. And then $23,175 for 2016, and $23,793 in 2017. Funds for these expenses, including administrative services provided by Delta and all the claims, are budgeted out of the Employee Benefit Fund. This is funded by premiums, the money set aside both by the city and by our employees, along with our subgroups that are participating on our health insurance plan. Our insurance consultant, Bob Charlesworth of Charlesworth and Associates, reviewed the proposal and found that the renewal was a good option at this time. He noted pricing wasn't out of line with the current market, and the three-year plan does allow us to prepare and plan as we move into budget years in the next two. We've identified the following options, and we do recommend Option 1, adopting Resolution Number 147163, authorizing the city manager to renew the agreement for three years. Option 2 would be to authorize the city manager to renew for just one year, or you would have the option to ask us to seek some alternative providers for dental care. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
What are the premiums for dental for employees and families?
The premiums are included in our overall premium. So they're included in the health insurance and the prescription at this time.
Okay, so if you buy the health insurance, you bought Delta Dental as well?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not an optional tag-on. We include it, and that's where the 515 contracts come in. It's... It is priced a little bit different for the dental, because they don't break it out and charge more per dependent. It's... We have X amount of contracts, and they charge us the administrative fee on those contracts with them. Whereas our... I can get into it a little bit, but how our other structures for benefits are a little bit different.
Okay. So is each dependent then come into play when you say you have 515 contracts?
Yeah, that would just be employees and then the individuals covered by the subgroups. That's where, you know, if an individual has a spouse and three children, we don't pay five times that dollar amount. It's the employee has the contract, so it's a good deal. The benefits are still offered, and our current benefit is $1,500, maximum benefit for dental. It includes like two preventative appointments per year, and then a 20%, 80% copay for any of those services up to that maximum limit of $1,500. And that would be whoever is covered on the plan, not $1,500 per family, but $1,500 per individual.
Have you, by any chance, had any years in which the premium went down?
I do not recall, since I've been here, that those have been down.
We got a doctor now.
I do not recall. We have had several years of flat renewals and then incremental, and we're in one of those to where we had a flat renewal last year. So we would have three years at the current rate total if we would opt for the three-year, to where it'd be 2013, 14, and 15. But I do not recall in the last eight years, maybe even looking beyond, that we've had it decrease below that amount.
Well, I can go back 40, and I've never seen one, but...
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public on this issue? Okay. I'd bring it back to the Commission for possible action.
Since I just had a root canal and it wasn't covered by dental insurance, I will move that we approve Resolution Number 147163, authorizing the city manager to renew agreement with Delta Dental of Kansas for dental care benefits for three years.
Second. Motion to second to approve Resolution Number 14-7163. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 14-7162, authorizing the city manager to renew the agreement to provide administrative services for a self-funded health benefit plan and individual and aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas.
Okay. The City of Salina has self-funded the program, like I just mentioned, and our third-party administrator for the major medical portion of our benefits has been Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas, back to the time that we... Same deal with Delta Dental, as I just mentioned, back to the 96, 97 timeline. Self-funded programs involve where the employer is contributing funds to cover expenses and exchange for lower fees from an insurer versus where if all of those dollars being set aside would go straight to an insurance carrier, and we would receive flat or just coverage, period. In other words, we've opted to set money aside into a fund and then pay our own claims and associated expenses out of that pool of money. The administrative duties covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas include the claims processing, data entry marketing, provider discounts, and cost control. The stop-loss coverage is similar to a maximum deductible for our plan for a self-funded program, whereas additional expenses beyond an established limit is covered by that insurer. So in the event we would have a horrible claims year, we wouldn't... Without that stop-loss, it could potentially bankrupt our fund or put the city in financial turmoil in some areas without that coverage. We currently carry individual stop-loss of $150,000 for any one covered life on our plan, and then the aggregate stop-loss for our entire group in the event our claims would exceed 130% of what has been projected. The City of Salina has had a very low deductible structure in place, and while we've anticipated and expected to have to bump that for a few years, options have been weighed, and we've made decisions in the past to, rather than to change that plan, to keep where we're going and incrementally charge more premiums, both for the city and for the employee. Our efforts there were to keep our grandfathered status. Losing that grandfathered status, that's what the Affordable Care Act brings some other provisions and mandates into play, and that's why it was important for us until we knew some of the potential impacts, to try to hold on to that grandfathered status just as long as we could. Some of the plan options that we've reviewed in the past, when we looked at bumping the deductibles up, it was really just exchange for premium dollars over the structure, where it just didn't justify shifting the costs, because we didn't really, in the projections, gain anything by doing such. gain anything by doing such. But over the past few weeks, staff and Bob Charlesworth, our insurance consultant, we've had discussions with Blue Cross and Blue Shield when we received our renewal information, and we knew we needed to look at a number of options, because our plan year, our claims have been trending rather high, and then our renewal was higher than what we were hoping for. And specifically, we were looking at the stop-loss coverage that was higher than what we were anticipating. We had talked to them, we had come up with some different options, and I'll kind of go over where we're at with those. We looked at our current renewal. This is our current plan that will be effective until 1/31 of 15. It would be the exact same plan without changes to the co-insurance or to the deductibles that are in place. We would be able to keep our grandfathered status, and we would leave our prescription benefit management with our current provider who's not Blue Cross Blue Shield, it's MedTrack. So those are separate than the dollar amounts we're talking about now. Another option was our grandfathered plan, or a grandfathered plan, but Option E is what we've labeled it. It moved the prescription benefit plan, the management, to Blue Cross Blue Shield from MedTrack. A quote for this structure was requested with the intention of maybe lowering our stop-loss renewal by giving more insurance to Blue Cross, you know, giving maybe more volume of business. It would also provide a little more protection in some of our areas in the event we would have really high prescription claims. We currently do not have stop-loss coverage on our prescription program. By moving it under Blue Cross, it would pull it under that stop-loss umbrella. Then we also looked at the non-grandfathered plan, Option F. This would be a significant change to our plan structure. The prescription benefit management remains with MedTrack. The city would shift to a $2,000, $4,000 share pay plan, meaning a 50/50 split, $2,000 for an individual, $4,000 for a family. After the individuals or family would hit that threshold, then they would not have additional expenses for the medical. Losing that, as I'd mentioned before, would cause us to lose our grandfathered status, and some of the other mandates would come into play, including a maximum out-of-pocket, or as yet another acronym in the HR world, what providers are calling the MOOP. Those are set at $6,600 for individuals and $13,200 for family coverage for plan years in 2015. So what would happen is the difference between where we've established the limits of 2,000 and 4,000 with Blue Cross, the difference between that and those maximum out-of-pockets or MOOPs would be the ceiling for our employees to incur expenses with MedTrack. And MedTrack is a 30/70 split. The employees currently cover 30%, the city picks up 70%, and that would not change. We would leave the, under this plan, we would leave that cost share or co-insurance as is. The other, one of the other impacts of the Affordable Care Act in losing our grandfathered status would be the addition of several preventative services. That would be covered at 100%. You know, definitely not a bad thing, it's just a matter of, those would be covered, and those would not be subject to $2,000, $4,000 cost share. Those that are on the federal list, we would provide for anyone that is covered by our plan. We apply deductible and co-insurance for those now, so it's not that those services aren't available, we just pay for them in a different way, and there would be some expense incurred currently by the employees. I did attach a summary that compares the proposed rates and plan options. It's in the form of a spreadsheet with colored columns, so that might help reference on which plan we were referring to. Fiscally, we fund the health insurance expenses, as I mentioned before, with the employee benefit fund. We contribute the premiums, both the city share, the employee share, and then our subgroups pay. What I didn't mention there, and what I'd realized that I'd omitted, was any individuals that are on our COBRA plan would fall under that, as well as retirees that are on our plan. They would, I was including them with the employees, but they are actually separate in terms of, we don't label them employee, but they're covered by our plan, if they opt to. When we put together the 2015 budget, we assumed a 15% increase for both city and employees, because of the claims and how high they have trended over the past, particularly the past year, but really about the last 15, 16, 17 months. The stop-loss rate offered by Blue Cross Blue Shield is determined by a formula that accounts for both our plan's history and experience, along with other similarly sized pools, 15% and 85% respectively. In theory, in the event that we have horrible claims years, that could give us some protection and sort of smooth out or provide less volatility to those percentages of increases. The stop-loss provides security for our health insurance fund. If our total claims, like I've mentioned previously, would exceed 130% of the projected amount, we would not incur any additional expenses beyond that. During our proposal review, Mr. Charlesworth reviewed the premium structure and recommended that the city does not look to move past $150,000 per individual. We do have other options that were quoted to us, but that does assume a lot more risk for every individual that is on our plan. And we agree with, a few years ago, five to six years ago, we did move from a $75,000 stop-loss to 150, and we just don't know, given the last couple of years, that assuming more risk would be in our best interest. One other thing to consider is, with the stop-loss, when we do move to those higher levels, it's hard in the event we want to bring it back down to get anyone to quote us for those lower dollar amounts. Last year, we did also move from 120% of aggregate stop-loss to 130%. Under the current plan structure, noted as the current renewal, the estimated maximum cost for both administrative services and stop-loss coverage is $746,182 for the upcoming benefit plan year. And again, that's based on our current contracts and expected claims, so that could vary depending on employees that may join in different positions and vacancies that we fill. Claims are projected at 4.394 million for the upcoming benefit year, which is a 7.76% increase above this current year. The stop-loss was quoted at 41.44% above this year's rate. The result is an increase of $157,822. The grandfathered plan, Option E, was not considered to be viable, as the stop-loss increased by 50.22%. This was where we rolled the prescription into Blue Cross away from MedTrack, along with anticipated increases to prescription claims. Under the non-grandfathered Option F plan, the estimated maximum cost, based on current contract counts and expected claims, again, for both the administrative fees and stop-loss coverage, is $745,997. Claims are projected at just over 4.13 million, which is an increase of 1.29%. The difference there is the structure of the plan really shifts some of the expense. It shifts it away from the city and technically puts it with the individuals that are covered by the plan. And if you, although there's a number of variables on how you could allocate and project who may be paying what fee, just across the board on the covered contracts, that would be about $500 per individual that's enrolled. And by individual, I'm not getting into, you know, the family members and the covered lives, that's just the number of individuals that have rolled through us on our plan. To note also, it's not associated directly with our claims, or our stop-loss fees, or any administrative burden, but the city will pay just under $93,000 in January for fees associated with this plan year. And these are called the transitional reinsurance fees. These were mandated by the Affordable Care Act. These are calculated at $63 per covered life. So that was every individual, every spouse, every child, everyone that's been covered on our plan. There's different formulas on how to calculate it, and we used an averaging method, I could go into the details, but in a nutshell, it totaled just under $93,000 in fees that we will be, that we have to pay no later than January 15th of next year. The rates for the 2015 plan will come down slightly at $44 per covered life, again, we'll have to pay it by January the following year. They have not yet published what the 2016 rates will be. The 2015 available funds for health benefits claims and administration, with the 15% increase over the current model, or the current premium structure, it makes available to us approximately $7 million for 2015. Again, it includes both the employee and the subgroup's premiums, along with the amount the city has set aside. The city's portion is approximately $5 million, that was what was put into for the 2015 budget. Given the high claims trending for this year and the added expense for the stop-loss increase, the most affordable option is, unfortunately, the non-grandfathered plan, Option F. The costs continue to increase, and the benefit fund cannot absorb all of the additional cost. Although shifting additional expense to the employee is really not ideal, the shared plan structure could assist in helping us stabilize some of our costs. Blue Cross Blue Shield continues to be a very good claims administrator, and they have excellent provider discounts. They have so many individuals, providers in their network, that we do benefit from having those provider discounts, rather than contracting with someone who does not, and overall still gives us a competitive health benefit program. Staff will review many options available for our wellness program participation, both rewards and penalties. In talking with city manager, we're really looking at a number of different options on what we can do there, both identifying some of our higher-risk areas, promoting the areas that we really are trending toward that is ultimately going to cost us more, if not right now, eventually. And we are striving to gain more participation and more data to make those decisions. As we do evaluate those concepts, we'll be sure and report back to you what some of them could be. I know that's a lot of information. I will share two graphs that might help summarize what I just went over. I thought it was important to take a look at the 2010 to 2014. The stacked chart shows, these are our total of expenses, but it's claims, stop-loss, and admin. Green on top, red in the middle, and the administrative fees on the bottom. And this does include all three, I guess, elements of our plan, the medical, prescription, and dental. So you can see where our expenses really coming in is our increase in claims. There is one more, and it is a line chart that just shows the difference of where we have funded and where our expenses have come in, and you can see our lines crisscrossed and started heading in an area that we really didn't want to go. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there are any questions, we have representatives from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas here today, as well as our insurance consultant, Mr. Charlesworth.
Okay, thanks. Any question for staff?
In addition to the third-party administrator, does the city ever consider a full, fully insured program?
We've had those conversations, and I might even let Mr. Charlesworth kind of explain his expertise and why we think it's best to continue to self-fund, so I don't know if you have additional questions for me, or if now would be appropriate time to.
Well, I've got, I don't know if my additional questions might be appropriate for you or not, but.
Okay.
I'll give it a shot. All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Charlesworth, I'm with Charlesworth and Associates in Overland Park, Kansas. Just to clarify, we're strictly an insurance consultant, we are not a broker. We don't get paid a commission on any of this product, we're paid a fee by the city. Fully insured, you can surely do it that way. Usually on groups 250 and above, 500, where you're at, is a very solid number for self-funding. Even if you fully insure, the carrier's going to look at all your claims data, just like what you were looking at a minute ago, and then they're going to put what they call a margin in there, which is an error factor, if you will. And I don't find many insurance companies erring on your side, they usually err on their side. So this way, when you look at it, you can actually break down the pieces of where our dollars are actually going. If you look at yours, about 12.5% are going to fixed cost, stop-loss and the claims administration, provider network discounts. The rest of it goes toward claims expenses. Even if you were fully insured, based on your size, you would be considered a viable group as far as how they rate you, and you'll be given a credibility factor. She talked about stop-loss factors. It actually switches a little higher the other way, where your claims are going to represent your rates. And so when you look at it this way, it actually makes sense to self-fund. One thing that really isn't in here, when you fully insure, you're actually subject to some of the health insurance taxes under the Affordable Care Act. And by self-funding, you're avert some of those taxes, actually. Rule of thumb is about 2%. So if you look at 2% on $7 million, it's about $140,000 that the city is not having to pay, because you are self-funded, or you would be subject to those dollars if you went fully insured.
I took that $7 million, and that's the reason for my question, I guess, and divided it, I picked 515 again. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but it came out to $13,592 per unit, which sounds like a lot of money to me for health insurance. Maybe I'm, I don't know what I'm talking about, but it just.
Well, that's a good question. We actually break it down by single and family. And one of the things we look at as well in 2018, there's, you could be subject to what they call the Cadillac tax, and that's based on parameters of how much it costs per year. I'd have to pull the information out, but it's about $10,500 for a single, $23,700 for a family. Anything above that, you should tax 40% of the difference. So you kind of break those out, instead of per 515, you kind of break it out by single and family. If you look at the single, it's about 500, if you look at a family, it's about 1,500, 1,600 about. So that's kind of how we look at it. I see where you're coming from, but if you look at those numbers, 500, which is about $6,000 for an employee, and then the 1,500, which would be $18,000 for a family, that's probably within the parameter of what we would expect, especially on a plan with a modest deductible that the city has, $250.
Yeah. And the other question was, on the dependent side, does the city pays the employee premium? Is that correct?
Not 100%, no. It's about an 80/20 split. The employee pays, based on the information I have, is they're projecting it $101 per month, and then the city pays the difference, which would be about 500, 400 roughly a month. And then, I don't know, now has it, I'm going to let her answer that, because she has the sheet in front of her.
Yeah, current breakdown for our full-time, the employee pays 88, the city pays 353 for individual coverage, that's every month. The 15% increase would put it at approximately $101 per month, and then the city portion about 406. On the family side, 237 for the employee, 946, the 15% increase would put it at approximately 273, and the city share at 1088.
So it's more of a bargain to have a family if you're working for the city, then, correct? Is that something that ever gets evaluated as well?
We talked about it today, even, one of the other, you know, we represent a lot of public candidates in my firm, and it's all over the ballpark, some based on a percentage. We have a couple of groups that actually have it on three tiers, kind of like the state plan, in fact. Based on your income, it determines the amount of which you pay. We have a university that if it's under, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but if you bank under 35... you make under 35, you pay X percent, and they're case two. If you make between 35 and 55, you pay five for a single coverage. Anything over that, you pay 8% of the premium. So therefore, it's tiered based on income. That's one rule. Other rules, some carriers, public entities set up a flat amount. I think most school districts pay X amount for a single, and then the, the family costs, the entire cost is borne by the dependent family. And that's, that's really dramatic differently from what you all do. But commonly, yeah, the 20% to 25% of what the employee pays for family coverage is pretty common to see in public entities. On the single part, you have to be careful. Under the Healthcare Reform Act, the, you cannot have a single employee pay over 9 and 1/2% of their income, based on the model of 130 hours a month, 130 hours a month, minimum wage, 9 and 1/2% of that. If you charge over, and we don't have anybody at that level or above that, but we were looking at today, if you charge over $109, I think, you might get fined. So there's a parameter that we have to watch that we do not go over for single coverage.
I'm, you know, when we're talking larger numbers, and this, this one approximates, well, about 10% of our budget.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's a lot of money. And so I, you know, we're always talking about ways that we can save money and, you know, make, make things due with less and that sort of thing. And this is one of those areas that it's a natural. It's hard to cut back on the police department, but I guess you could. But I just wonder if there are ways to economize when it comes to, to health. And I, and I guess about the only way to do it is to have a healthier workforce.
That.
And maybe to emphasize the, the health side of our program rather than paying for claims necessarily. And, but that's, that's a different project.
We've got to get rid of these families. That's the problem.
Yeah. And I don't know if this is really even a question, but I thought, but, you know, when the deductible increases to a large amount, that's upfront, early out-of-pocket money for the employee.
That is correct.
Employee.
For the employee and their family.
And the family.
It's two-tier, right.
Right. And if it's a large family deductible, that's when having a lot of kids is not necessarily good, because it's more folks who are going to keep pushing you up to that max. And just from the perspective of physician's offices, if a person has a large deductible and they don't really make that much money, the doctor's office doesn't get paid.
That's correct.
You know, so it's...
One of the challenges we face, and one of the options that, option F that Natalie outlined for you, you're on a, a very modest deductible now in the industry, 250 for a single, 500 for a family, and it's paid 80/20 after that. So the worst case for a, a single person is $1,250 a year and 2,500 for a family. The share pay concept, while it saves dollars, and it's, it's 50/50, the drugs are already 70/30, you're paying 70%, employee pays 30, it's got a consumerism element to it. In other words, you're going to ask the question, how much does this cost? Why? Because I'm paying half of it. At 250, it's like, well, it's just 250, then it goes 80/20. So there's a little bit of consumerism encouragement when you go to a share pay plan, but it is a cost shift. I mean, we, you see the numbers. I mean, it, when you get your size, you know, it's kind of you are you. You know, we, we stop claims at 150,000. Above that's Blue Cross's responsibility, but your claims are your claims. What can we do to manage those claims? Getting people for their wellness check every year is a big deal. Have a wellness fair. You just talked about it. We have clients now that they have what they call a premium differential. You have stuff to watch, the 9 and 1/2% rule. They say it's 100 and, I'm going to use these numbers here, $100 for you to have your own individual plan. It's 75 if you take your health risk assessment and your biomarker screening, or you see your physician at least once a year. I don't care what the results are. I just want to know that you did it. Check the block. And that way, you at least know that they're getting the care that they need. At least you hope. Know your numbers. So we're starting to see more and more of that in the marketplace. And I think that was one of the comments that Natalie says, and I know she and Jason have been talking about it for a while, and how do we implement that? What can we do to get people to go?
The city's line to have claims management assistance, you know, for persons...
Through Blue Cross of Kansas, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas.
People tend to be perennial outliers for utilization, or they assign someone to kind of find out, well, how come you keep banning up the emergency room instead of your doctor's office?
You know, Blue Cross is here. I'll let them answer that.
And it looked like such a short meeting on the agenda.
Right. I was going to get off Scott Freeman.
Yeah, right.
Thank you very much for having us today. We do have some systems in place. We have what we call care management, case management departments in Topeka that review high users, that review people with chronic conditions, and really try to get involved in the day-to-day care of these members based on diagnosis or based on if we have the medication piece, the medications prescribed, et cetera. But it is a voluntary program in some cases, and in other cases, it is not. As it comes to some of the high-cost members, maybe the cancers or the, some of the chronic conditions that last for years and years, though, we do have a nurse care department in Topeka that works with these people. If they're on expensive medicines, if they need expensive treatments, work hand-in-hand with them to try to make sure they're getting the care they're needed, but at the most economical way of doing so.
Piggybacking on Dr. Davis's question, though.
Okay.
I like the idea of using a stat care kind of concept rather than the emergency room, about 1/10 the cost. And how do you encourage that segment of the population to change their behavior?
Yeah. Good question. We're lucky in Slanta to have a stat care situation, and the nice thing about our stat care is that the charges are, you know, pretty much equal to visiting your family doctor. They do have limited hours. I mean, it really has to come with education. Sometimes it's done by benefit structure. A lot of our plans have what we call an office visit co-pay, which, when, when you use the stat care facility, you just pay your $25 office visit co-pay. The plan we've had here in the past at the city is a deductible. Well, if I'm, if this is my first claim of the year and I have to choose, do I want to visit stat care where I know their charges should be cheaper versus the emergency room, I'm going to choose stat care when I can. So a lot of it's benefit-driven, but also I think just education to the members is important, and that could easily come hand-in-hand with, with wellness initiatives that are offered here at the city.
Do you have any experience or data on, on the percentage of people who, with a group this size, probably would never be able to pay that $2,000 deductible? Because what happens, you know, in the medical side, there's a lot of medical bankruptcy. And it's, it's probably better legal terms, bankruptcy because of medical bills. And very often, that high deductible is the reason, because it just keeps building and they, they just don't have the means to pay it. Sometimes, you know, in this country, we've been led to believe, well, companies picking it up. You know, it's not money that we think of as coming out of our pocket. So there's, there's something to be said for the consumerism approach.
Sure.
If you have the money. If you don't have the money, then it's a big bill that they accumulate every year.
Yeah. Understood. I don't know that I have any statistics on what percentage in a group this size would or would not be able to, in the end, afford their $2,000 responsibility. One thing that's really nice about this proposed plan with the 50/50 consumerism element built in, the provider's going to get paid half by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and we know that happens pretty quickly, leaving the other half to the member. You know, in some cases, there might need to be some sort of a payment option, I guess, worked out with the member. The $2,000 per person or $4,000 per family out-of-pocket liability is a very standard amount now. We've talked in the past, just today about the $250 deductible that's currently in place being pretty modest by today's standard. And you, it's been nice that you've been able to keep it for so long, but, you know, times are changing, and I don't have a $250 deductible, and I'm an employee at Blue Cross. I think the 2,000, 4,000 out-of-pocket is very reasonable and very in line with today's standard.
Prescriptions are included in this plan?
No, the 2,000, 4,000, 2,000, 4,000 is for the health. Those are the limits on the health annually. And then the prescription drug, up to 70/30, the employee would pay 30% and the, and the insurance company, the MedTrak, would pay the 70%. That's now going to have the cap of 4,600, whatever the difference is up to that legal...
So it wouldn't matter what generic brand name, it's just 70/30?
Yeah, it's 70/30, which is nice as well, just like we're proposing on the health. It has that consumerism element. It steers people towards generic usage because they're going to, their 30% is going to be a lot less if they're using a generic.
So a person with a cancer or multiple sclerosis or any expensive illness, they're going to hit that 4,600 cap.
You bet.
And their 2,000 personal.
There is no cap.
But under the...
On the firm?
Currently, under, under non-grandfathered, there is no cap.
Oh, okay. Or on the plan we're considering, but with 50/50.
On the non-grandfathered stand, there would be a cap.
Of 4,600.
Now, we can still, we could always establish a cap. City can do that if you would like, regardless of what healthcare reform is. If you want to keep your current deductible plan, that's fine. If you want to pay a cap on prescription drugs, we can run the numbers at what cap you want to set at.
And would the current stop-loss cover that or not?
It would only cover up to what, it would not go above the cap. Because stop-loss doesn't have drugs on it right now.
Stop-loss.
Okay, right.
Right.
Just medical.
That's correct.
Any other questions for staff or...
Staff or Natalie, I think probably best on this one, just from, because this, you put together this chart for us, the purples and greens and blues and...
Well, I have to, to give Mr. Charlesworth credit for that. I, I adapted a little bit, but it really is his chart.
Okay. Well, then, for, for both of you then, just, just to kind of be clear on kind of the grandfather, the, you know, the three different plans. And that is, because we're talking about co-pays and deductibles and shares and everything else. And so just, just so that I'm clear, currently, under our current renewal plan, we have a $250 deductible, correct? And is that a one-time per-year charge or is that per occurrence?
Per year.
Per year. Okay.
For an individual.
Okay. And so the 2,000, 4,000 is quite substantial departure from what we're doing. My concern is this, and it goes to, I think, what Dr. Davis's question might have been about, and that is, I mean, I think he was taking it from the cost of the provider being paid, and do we have any sort of idea about if this would cause someone to delay or forego treatment because they don't have the, whatever, what, it would have to be something north of 250, obviously.
Yes, we do.
I'll touch on that real quick.
Three hours ago.
Based on your numbers, it would really be hard to predict. I can say from national statistics, through the Kaiser Foundation, from Seagull Associates and others, a lot of companies have put in these qualified high-deductible plans, which is the first $2,500 is paid 100% by you as an individual. It'll be 2,600 in 2015, 5,200 for a family. I personally am on one. It was, the first $5,200 is my family's starting January 1st. That's a concern. Do we delay it? I'll tell you an exact example. Two weeks ago, I had chest pains. I had a heart attack seven years ago, so I'm a little sensitive. But the first question that went through my mind, if I go to ER, it was nine o'clock at night, how much is it going to cost me? And I can afford $5,200, not bragging, just saying, I have a health savings account, I could pay that. I waited till the next day to call my physician to go see him. It was just no big deal. Did it, EKG, but I had to pay the full amount. So, but I would rather have paid it there than at the ER, because I know that there's a difference. But I delayed care a day. Was that smart? No. That was really stupid. Doctor's probably just going to come out and just thump me. But I had to ask the question, how much do I have my responsibility for? And yes, it did come into play. And yes, statistics do show that people sometimes delay. Now, one of the benefits of the non-grandfathered healthcare is that you do get an annual physical paid 100% by the plan, which would be the city's dollars. So it does encourage people to get there. It is, it is a specific list of services. Anything beyond that, deductible co-insurance comes into play. And I guarantee you, when you go in, you may say, this is my list, don't do anything above it, and something's going to happen, and they're going to say, well, we need an EKG. EKG is not part of that list. Now I'm into my deductible and co-insurance. It's hard to understand that sometimes, because everybody says it's 100%. It's not always 100%. It matters what they do. So, yeah, it's a, it's a change. There's no question, it's a change.
Now, doesn't the co-pay take care of a lot of the ER expenses?
Your deductible, you don't have a co-pay, you have a deductible.
Oh, okay. The 2,000 doesn't have a co-pay that is...
It's 50/50 from dollar one. You pay half as an person, I pay half as a, as a city carrier.
So you could easily equate this pay share to a 4,000 and $8,000 deductible?
Not a deductible of service, because I'm paying half, you're paying half.
Okay.
But that is the worst case, 2,000 for individual, 4,000 for family.
Right.
So the bills would have to be 4,000 to 8,000.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Which, which you can blow in one night in the emergency room.
Yes, you're very right. I'm gathering you're a physician, so I'm going to go by your opinion.
Don't get sick.
Commissioners, there is, one thing I think I'll mention, and again, this is not to justify additional expense for the employees whatsoever, but one of the benefits that we do offer that we had identified earlier in this year is a flexible spending account for our employees. And we kind of put the blame back on human resources as far as not being really strategic about it. The education comes when an employee is new to the city, but when you're new to our plan or any plan, you don't really know what the expenses are going to be. And we realized the education needed to be ramped up for the individuals that are here at least a couple of years and beyond, and maybe there's a way for both them to save money, the flexible spending account, meaning they can set those dollars aside to cover medical expenses. It's still their dollars, but it's pre-tax, and that saves the employee on taxes as well as the city on those taxes that we cover as the employer. So we've ramped up the education on that, primarily the third quarter towards the last couple of months, or about the last month of this year, not anticipating we were going to be really in a dire situation to want to encourage it even more, but that may have some of those dollars available to individuals in the event we're forced to go to, you know, that more expensive plan, to where, once they sign up for that, those are dollars that are available to the employee to pay. Even if they haven't had that pulled out of their check yet, they would have any of those dollars set aside to cover those initial expenses. And the maximum an individual can put in, and it went from 25, I believe it's like 2,550 for next plan year, but it had been set at 2,500 for the last year.
Do lower-paid employees tend to set those up? My guess is that they don't.
It, it depends on their situation. It's, and I have not run it by income to look at the distribution. That would probably be a really good area to look at. I've looked at overall utilization, and we were surprised it was well below 30% when I looked at that. And we also have the pre-tax for dependent care, which is also underutilized in terms of the dollars that are out there, but it's, it's kind of scary. With some of the provisions changed this year to where it's not all use or lose for any money they set aside, they could roll up to an additional $500 over to use the next year if they don't use it all. I think people are getting adjusted to the idea a little more, but, you know, we'll, we'll give that option to them, an open enrollment, whatever, upon your direction, whatever plan design that we choose and put in front of them, they'll have that option.
Natalie, if I'm, a point of clarification, and this goes back to Commissioner Blanchard's statement, our current plan's a 250-500 deductible with an 80/20 co-pay.
Yes.
For the next, so it's not, if you have a 250 deductible, your total out-of-pocket on that plan would be $1,250. So you're not comparing 250 to 2,000, you're comparing 1,250 to 2,000.
All right. That makes a big, that's a big difference. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that is a good clarification.
Because it sounded like you were thinking 250, and I just wanted to make sure...
And I was, so I appreciate that.
So I wanted to make sure you understood that...
And then by that same token, for a family, it would be 2,500 comparatively.
Okay. Much better.
Natalie, those preventative services, I'm assuming they're like mammograms and things like that, those kind of exams?
I believe so, and I apologize, it has been a while since I looked at the full list. One of the questions that we were even tossing around today was the eye examinations, and to go back to double-check to see where those fall, because our, our current plan and years prior, it's like a $10 eye exam. Even though we don't have co-pays for anything else, that was carved out, and that was one of the benefits. And, and maybe Mr. Charlesworth knows... maybe Mr. Charlesworth knows on, for certainty, but it appears that on preventative services defined by the federal government, they're covered by children, but it's iffy if they're covered by adults. I don't think they are, but, no, okay.
So those, the list is sent out to the employees so they're well aware that those things are on that preventative list?
Yeah, and, and Blue Cross may be someone that can kind of cover what those services are, because they dealt with a lot more than I've had.
Well, I mean, I think that helps, uh, you know, our, our concern about health insurance escalating, if, if people would take care of those preventative measures, certainly would help.
Um, would it, going, going back to Dr. Davis's statement then, would it be more beneficial for some of, of our entry-level employees to have insurance with affordable healthcare instead of the city's healthcare?
My comparisons, when I was even trying to go out and compare on the exchange at different levels, it, it was not, um, but again, because I've only done that a couple of times, I might even refer to Mr. Charlesworth.
An employee can opt out, and they can go to the federal exchange if they would like. However, if they're eligible for benefits to an employer, they will not be eligible for a subsidy under the federal exchange.
Well, that's a big deal.
It's a huge deal.
Yeah.
And if you look at the exchanges, and the last I looked, uh, the lowest deductible's fifteen-hundred-dollar deductible was the lowest, and it's a plan, that's a silver plan. And the deductibles go up from there.
Would it make more sense then for the city plan to have varying, um, premium levels like you alluded to, that some organizations have, that are more based on income?
Uh, you know, it, that's a wonderful topic to have. I like that discussion. Uh, you know, I'd probably like to see the, where they would fall in, in the tier category. And it's just a matter of how the, the city wants it. The bottom line, though, at the end of the year, I, don't take this wrong, I need seven million dollars to manage the plan. How you want to get it is really your decision. Eighty-twenty of contributions, or you want to tier it, I, I don't care. But usually the utilization, as you saw, that's the funds that we need to get. How we get it's gonna be up to, actually, you all. Through our help, we'll be happy to look. And I do have those samples for you. State of Kansas has it as well.
And you say you top out at around nine percent, and it, anyway, something like that?
It varies. Uh, yeah, eight to ten. Uh, we had another one at fourteen percent.
Okay.
Um, that's pretty common, you know, but you got, again, on the, on the, on the end, on the individual employee, you have to always be conscious of the nine-and-a-half percent payer-play rule under the healthcare reform. So anything over nine-and-a-half percent that somebody has to pay out of their own income, you're gonna get fined.
Right, okay.
And so we have to be very careful about what we charge or what we don't charge.
So I could see some employees opting out of our plan and not enrolling in any plan, and it doesn't solve anything.
It really makes it worse. I, actually, I want more in the plan. The more in the plan, the more financially predictable it is. You know, when we have discussions, we have plans that we see with fifty-plus-thousand employees, and it's not cheaper, it's more predictable.
Yeah.
So larger's not necessarily cheaper, it's just more predictable. So really, I want more bodies on the plan as we can get them, because it makes it more viable.
Speaking of number, I, I did a little math on there. You said the ninety-three-thousand-dollar once-a-year renewal thing. So, do we have about thirteen-hundred, about thirteen-fifty on the plan?
It's just under thirteen-hundred, I believe, it's like twelve-something, somewhere there.
Okay. And do retirees make up a, what percentage of that?
Percentage-wise, doing the quick math, but we have around lower forties, um, forty-ish, it kind of fluctuates too, as individuals are old enough to qualify others, or we have new retirees enter on, but we have forty-some individuals roughly, on average.
Oh, okay.
Are they off at eighty-five?
They are off, yeah. When I mentioned they age off, sixty-five, they transition off.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
With respect to plan pricing, I think there's one thing, and I think Mr. Charlesworth will back this up. You know, if we adjust pricing, we need to make sure that we don't adjust it in a way that drives healthy people off the plan.
Right.
Because that is the kiss of death to a self-insured plan.
Well, and the younger people are more the healthier people.
And the lower paid.
And the lower paid.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay. Sure taking the fun out of a. Short meeting, I'll tell you what. Um, okay, well, knowing that we weren't gonna change the plan, it was sure nice to spend thirty minutes discussing it, but, I mean, it is important, but, I mean, it's beyond my pay grade. I didn't realize you guys were speaking English till a few minutes ago, but, uh, anyway, anyone from the public, I know, it's a tough life I live, but, no one, okay, well, we'll bring it back for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to, uh, execute the renewals of agreement to provide administrative services for self-funded health benefit plan and individual aggregate stop-loss with Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Kansas, listed as resolution number fourteen-dash-seven-one-six-two. Second.
Motion to second to adopt resolution number fourteen-dash-seven-one-six-two. Any further discussion?
I have a comment. I was, I was wondering if it would be, um, beneficial to explore having a tiered premium option for employees that does not scare people away from signing up for our health insurance program because they can't afford it. And, and it allows us to charge more for employees that, that make, um, you know, higher levels of income. Um, to me, to charge the same amount, whether you make eleven dollars an hour, or you make a hundred thousand a year, doesn't sound equitable. And, and I don't think it really accomplishes what we're trying to do with health insurance. What we're trying to do is make everybody, keep everybody healthy and, and doing things that, that we think we want them to do, and also control our, our overall healthcare cost. And I, I don't know that the plan, the way it's constructed now, really accomplishes that. I guess I share some of that same concern in that an employee will probably perceive only two numbers, the two-fifty deductible, the two-thousand deductible. I mean, you're paying it piecemeal as you go along, but, you know, that's, those, those are the two numbers, and it's, uh, it may be a significant increase in a short period of time for the employees, and it's, it's, I just have more to think about since we've been discussing it here, and I'm.
Is that something you want to try and do this year, or is it a direction that you want to try and?
See, I wasn't thinking in terms of the deductible necessarily, as I was the premium that, that's paid to get in the door. Um, I think once the, the employees in the door, then we can deal with the other stuff perhaps, where we have a better shot at it. But just to deal with the premium is, is a much easier process, and maybe doesn't take as, as much research.
I wonder if it wouldn't be better to look, explore that and, and think about that for another year, because you would want to get the employees, um, you know, the employee group together, I would imagine, to get some input from them before you change all that, because it's been this way for a long time.
Well, well, this action would just, correct me if I'm wrong, but this action would just set the, the contract for the policy and so on. It doesn't, this doesn't affect our premium structure per employee, does it?
Right, at your direction. I mean, we could look at some different models of funding, employee versus employer, share different tiers based on income or any other methods that, that, you know, you would like to see. Um, so yeah, I guess we're looking at guidance on what policy can we afford.
Right. And so this one, the, the price of this one is what it is regardless of how we set up our, this individual tiering or whatever. This price is what this price is.
Yeah, the, yeah, the information.
As far as the premium.
Right, right.
But not the maximum out-of-pocket.
Well, I think we're looking at three options here, and I think the motion at least was for the, for the option that was, uh, the non-grandfathered, uh, option with the twenty, with the two-thousand, four-thousand pay share. And so my, my comment was just that that, that is what it is regardless of how we determine if there's, if the viability of a tiered structure for premiums. And so, and that's why, as do we, do you want to look at that for this year or for next year? Because I think that's something that, following a vote on this thing, we can maybe discuss.
I don't think the premium is gonna be a problem for people. It's.
Oh, well, it could be.
One of the premium, is premium, are premiums different on the two plans?
No, the premium's the same, but it's high.
The, the premium that we, how we currently fund the plan, um, if you recall, I mentioned we, we estimated a fifteen percent increase, and with that fifteen percent increase applied across the board, um, for an individual cover, coverage, the single plan, and then deciding what that plan will be, but a fifteen percent increase on what is currently charged right now for our current plan, fifteen percent on that would be approximately one-hundred-one dollars for, um, an individual, where the city picks up the other four-hundred-and-six dollars versus two-hundred-seventy-three for a family, and the city picks up the remaining ten-eight-eight. Um, you know, we, we can take a look at different models on how we fund that, how we get to that plan balance, like Mr. Charlesworth said, you know, identifying, we need approximately seven million dollars in the fund, but we can report back some different options on how we project to get there.
And is that different for the current renewal versus the option F?
Um, before you, we did not present anything. Um, now, granted, when we're shifting additional costs, um, it may give us more room to play with those numbers, but, and I would defer to Mr. Charlesworth too, because I've looked at the numbers and different variations, and then he's run those as well.
Because it's been my experience, any money that comes out of a check before a person gets it in their hand is sort of not missed. It's the money that comes, that you have to pay for the bill that comes three weeks after you've been to the doctor's office that starts adding up, you know, bills which keep a person from going to the doctor the next time they get sick.
The action today does not affect directly the premium that would be charged to the employee for participation in the plan. The action today sets the characteristics of the plan and establishes the third-party administrator. So the action today does affect the two-fifty deductible, eighty-twenty copay versus the fifty-fifty shared pay characteristics, and that, that, that part does, is part of the action today. But what the employee pays to participate in the plan is not specifically a part of that action. That could be done at a later date.
Right. And, and I wasn't trying, I, I'm all supportive of the plan, and I'm thinking that a hundred dollars a month might be considered a lot of money for somebody making eleven dollars an hour, or less, or I, I don't know where we start with the city employees. But, um, you know, that's a huge expense. And it's, I'm wondering if there's some premium that would half that, say, if we could restructure the premiums charged to the employees based on the, um, their paycheck. If that would convince somebody, well, I'm only paying ten dollars a week, I can handle that, uh, for my premium.
I'm sold on the idea that gives us three of us, so we'll go ahead and get on with this ordinance and get through this meeting, and you can look at that as a tiered plan. It sounds like three of us want it. Doesn't matter with the other two carrots, that's the majority, it sounds great. So, any other discussion on this issue?
Uh, where are we on that?
We've had a motion.
Basically, they, they wanted to look at a tiered plan, and three of us think that's a great idea. So, I mean, if you guys want to chime in, it's great, but.
Well, we still need a motion.
Well, that doesn't address the motion.
We have a motion, we have a motion to second. So, any further discussion on this issue?
Maybe it would be helpful for the clerk to restate the motion. Oh, well, I didn't mean to push you in a difficult.
I'd be happy to.
Spot this question as to what the motion. Okay.
I'd be happy to remake the motion if that would, so if I would regret, withdraw my prior motion, is that, what's the proper?
Well, that would be fine.
Okay.
We had a motion.
Yeah, the motion's fine. It was merely a motion.
We don't need another motion.
Reading the item, resolution number fourteen-dash-seven-one-six-two, and, and the verbatim wording below, we have a second.
With the non-grandfathered fifty-fifty option.
Second.
Okay. Motion to second to, to adopt resolution number fourteen-dash-seven-one-six-two with a non, you say the non-grandfathered option, is that right?
Non-grandfathered fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty. Any other discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That motion carries five-zero. And that moves us on to development business.
Item eight-point-one, first reading ordinance number fourteen-dash-one-zero-seven-five-nine, amending Salina Code Section thirty-one-point-six, definition of perennial violator within the property maintenance code.
Mr. Hobbie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Commissioners, we bring to you a modification to our existing chapter thirty-one, the property maintenance code for the city of Salina. The section we'd like for you to review today and amend happens to deal with a definition of a perennial violator. Number thirty-three is in our, in your chart when you look at the definitions. Today, a perennial violator is a person who shows a pattern of failing to comply with chapter, which may have shown three or more notices of abatement, notices of costs, or previous violations to this chapter in the preceding twelve months. The issue that we have today referring for you is the preceding twelve months is the biggest issue that we have to concern ourselves with. Uh, the three numbers, the number of three violations is not as much the issue as much as we wanted to clarify some of the reasons why, uh, three, the number three, or could be counted as three violations within the year. But the biggest issue happens to deal with the preceding twelve-month period. As an example, as a gentleman or an owner of a property would receive two violations in two thousand and fourteen, and the second one in two thousand and fifteen, and his first one happened to be in March of two thousand and fourteen, that third violation would put him in within a perennial violator within a twelve-month period. But if he did wait until May after his first one came in March, then we would change his, his actual starting date, the twelve-month preceding period, to his second violation notice period. And that makes us run a total of twelve-month period on each violation for each property and the ownership thereof. It's, gets to be much of a nightmare for us to track, uh, three violations is not as much the issue as it is the preceding twelve-month period. So our main goal today was to get you to modify that to an annual period of time, uh, so we can work on the process. Uh, the municipal court has worked with us in the past on this, this process, and we feel like that changes in the, uh, the definition would be beneficial not only to us, but the municipal court's side. Our goal is, again, to make sure that the owner of the property understands that there are maintenance requirements and responsibilities within the community. Uh, we feel like the change in the code modifying the definition of perennial violator one lets the perennial violator determine the basis number violations or further explain that, and the preceding year is what the issue is. So we'd like to change, as you have in the section, uh, the second section, the second page of your blue sheet, the perennial violator will go into effect as of January first, two thousand and fifteen, and run through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. The term perennial violator should mean a person who shows a pattern of failing to comply with this chapter, which may be shown by three or more notices of abatement, notices of costs, or previous violations in the chapter in the preceding twelve months. Then after January first of two thousand and sixteen, since we have to run this for a one-year period, the perennial violator then would go to a previous calendar year. So we would take those violations in two thousand and fifteen, and if they've had three or more in a two thousand and fifteen year, then in two thousand and sixteen, they'd automatically be a perennial violator. We feel like also that the definition of the, uh, or clarification of the violations is an order, so we actually had our city attorney draft with us three separate specific areas in which the violation notice, in other words, A is a written issued violation notice or to abatement of connection with the violations of this chapter. We're only talking about the property maintenance code, we're not talking about a building code, we're not talking about sidewalks in, uh, it's a different chapter with public works or something of that nature. We're not talking about a sanitation chapter, and I think just chapter thirty-one. The second section is when we have weeds and overgrowth. Uh, if you'll remember tall grass and weeds, we give one violation notice a year. After that, city staff finds a violation of an overgrowth of over eight inches in height, we're not required to re-notice that property owner, but we're allowed to go in and abate that issue. So B allows us to go, uh, count, actually, the second abatement process that we would have. So one would be, his first choice would be, his first violation would be the notice, the second The second one would be a city abatement of a project that has been previously noticed in tall grass and weeds. Then the third area would be the city is any other violation within this chapter. So we'll still remain with three violations in an, basically a revolving years period of preceding 12 months. At the end of the January, or December 31st of 2015, we will count up, then it'll be on an annual basis rather than a proceeding 12-month basis. We feel like our software is not capable of helping us track a revolving 12-month period, but it will help us track a preceding, or an annual process. We'll be able to put a specific notification to each one of the violations that happen, happen in chapter 31 in our software, and it will then notify when the code enforcement officer goes out to do an abatement or look at an inspection process, they will see that they have had one or two marks prior. And on the third mark, then they will actually send it to us for a perennial violators process that will go through the municipal court. So we're hoping that we can change from the preceding 12 months into an annual process at the end of year 2015 and 2016, and we'll be on an annual year process from there. But it does take us some time to roll out of the existing system. I know that's a very complicated process, and it's been complicated for us and our staff to make sure that we get the process figured out entirely within our own system, and allow our code enforcement officers to continue on through their code enforcement process. We feel like they've been pretty successful this year. As you noticed in the first chap, first paragraph or so, we've had over 2,600 inspections that they've, they have completed this year, with over 1,700 violation notices going out. We feel like we're doing some good work in the community, but we'd like to be able to get to those owners of the properties. So an owner and a premise is the same thing, so it'd be, the same owner would have to be notified on the same premise or the same property three times in a years period of time, rather than just three per owner. We feel like if we narrowed down the scope a little bit, it would be much easier for us to track as well in our software. It's a complicated process as far as perennial violator is concerned. There are not many perennial violators in other chapters in other cities within the community. We have Aaron Martin from Clark-Moise Moonville, who is here to help draft the language for this language, for this code change. So I'd be more than glad to answer any questions, or Aaron is here to help us answer those questions as well.
Okay. Any questions for staff on this?
Yeah, looking at this, is there, there currently is a, is a definition in place for a perennial violator.
That is correct.
So this is not, this is redefining or adding to the definition.
Clarifying for us, as far as city staff, as well as changing the annual period of time, the period of time, rather than a revolving period of time, it will eventually change to an annual period rather than a revolving 12-month period.
Okay. And then, this is, the perennial violator, in, looking in the language of the edited text, looks like it's more of a property-specific thing. So if you have a, a person that owns 10 different properties, and they've got two notices every year on 10 properties, they're, they're a 20-time violator, but they wouldn't be considered a perennial violator.
You are correct. We're talking about the owner of the property has to be the same, as well as the premise or the property address has to be the same for three times in one year period.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Do we have a policy that is not effective? That, to, to say that we have...
Efficient?
That's not efficient, for sure.
Not efficient, that is very true.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe effective too. We have 75 violators, according to your information, and it seems to me that the 75 people are not sufficiently, how should I say it?
Motivated?
Motivated, there you go. To, to comply with our ordinance.
That is true. The 75 number is just an estimate. We have not really tracked it throughout this whole period of year to see how many would actually be within that number. If you'll notice, that 1,700 violations are for multiple properties, multiple addresses. So that, the 75 number is just a quick run-through of, this is how many names have been pulled up on our system that would allow us to work on, that we have to refine that to this exact number of addresses that are involved. Commissioner Blanchard is correct that we have one owner that has, they'll say they have 150 properties, and they may have 100 violations for the year, but it's on each set, on a bond, separate properties that they own. And this narrows down the scope down to the same owner on the same property, same property address for three times within a one year. So it does narrow that scope down.
Do we need a bigger hammer? For perennial violators?
Aaron, commissioners, if I may...
Always, yeah.
One, one aspect that I hope is relevant, is it fair to say in terms of the system, Mr. Hobby, that the transition is largely just from a rolling status...
Right.
...to a fixed year?
Yeah.
Depending on how you perform in 2015 will dictate whether in 2016 you're a perennial violator. And if you have six in 2015 and have none in 2016, you are no longer a perennial violator.
That is correct.
So, that's part of it. But the other is, generally in these situations, the remedy is going to be, if they fail to abate in response to the notice, that the city will abate and assess. As you may have noted, one of the other consequences of the perennial violator status is, the city, that's the trigger for municipal prosecution, as opposed to simply the abatement and the assessment. So I don't know if that was something we were processing in terms of, another distinction in terms of how we're treating, or how this would propose to treat perennial violators, but that is one other consequence.
That is correct. The penalty will not change. A penalty for being a perennial violator will not change at all.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Anyone from the public here to comment on this? Of course, you do, Norm.
When is it a public nuisance and when it is a wildlife habitat?
Good point.
The World Wildlife Fund will be notified. Because there is wildlife in the city. I've seen it. It was out of season, so I couldn't shoot the pheasant.
Maybe a few other, maybe a few other violations in there.
Wild habitat.
Gosh, I don't know, that's a, could be a good cross-section. Why is it the days I want to get the heck out of here that the most obscure Salvador Dali-ish questions come out of the woodwork? What is the, is God hates me?
We have put some parameters around those areas, such as parks and recreation, the golf course, some of those, we allow grass to grow at a height greater than eight inches in height, around some of our stormwater detention areas and those type of things. They do allow that. We allow slopes that are greater than one to four in slope to allow them to have a growth pattern of higher than, than eight inches in height. We've not really talked about specific habitat areas, although they could be, if you drive past the golf course on a monthly basis throughout the year, you'll see multiple deer running across the golf course to, to the area out east of town. So it does have habitat in it as well. We're looking at the height of grass as the main thing.
Okay. Okay. Where do you even go with this? That's so surreal. Okay, all right. Anyone else? Good, good question? Good question? I'm not going to fault you for thinking of Mother Nature. Anyone else from the public? Nobody? Okay. I'll bring it back to the commission then for possible action.
Mayor, I, I move we approve on first reading ordinance number 14-10759, amending Salina Code Section 31.6, definition of perennial violator within the property maintenance code.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adopt ordinance number 14-10759. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Any other business?
Just one thing. We could, in a future study session, look at options for either tiered triggers of maximum out-of-pocket income, if it's legal to do so, tier the premiums to income, and educational efforts to get city employees to use health savings accounts and use preventive services.
Yeah, I think that kind of seemed like a pretty reasonable...
Yeah, I think that was the intent of staff on that issue, is to bring those back, back to you, either in study session or in regular session to talk about.
Somebody go ahead.
Good. Mayor, if I may, we have had a situation come up that prompts me to request a brief executive session.
Oh, no.
It's something, it's something that I believe, frankly, if, if you need to leave, I would bet if I can walk you to the door, I can fill you in.
Fill me in? Okay, okay.
If the others don't mind.
No, we can, we can probably get, I think I'm fine, actually.
This is a, this is a first. I think we can do this in between five and 10 minutes. I realize that's a range, but if...
I wouldn't bet on that, five or 10 minutes.
I think we can. I think we can, and I don't believe, we don't anticipate any action necessary afterwards, so...
Okay.
That would be very...
Well, we could do it in five if he's in a hurry.
Yeah, you're right.
Attorney-client.
Yes, it's attorney-client privilege. Thank you.
Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss with the legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 6:50.
I have a motion, a second, to move into execu, I'm sorry.
I'll go in second.
Second, motion, a second. Well, I'm really trying to get sent there. To convene into executive session, return at 6:50.
5:50.
5:50, whatever.
I'm sorry, 5:50.
5:50.
That new clock.
There you go, hour and 10 minutes, whatever. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we're in executive session.
It's called "The Professor and the President."